Good evening, welcome to Night School. Today is Monday, September 27th, 2021, 6 o'clock. When the Susan Todd lives, they were in the 18 and 7 building. I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask Mr. Calhoun to call.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Stoltz?
Here.
Ms. Borpego?
Here.
We do have a quorum. We will continue. I will note that this meeting has been those first day statutes. Do we have any community participation? Seeing none. We'll dispense with reading that and go to approval of our minutes from September 13th. That's to your agendas, the regular minutes, closed session I passed out. Any questions on those? Very none. Looking for motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2021, regular and closed sessions, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2021, regular and closed sessions, school board meeting as presented. Go, Calhoun, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel? Mr. Martel?
Excuse me.
Snag your head yes or no?
Yes, for the open and abstain for the closed.
Okay. Uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
I have space.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. General Other Fund Bills, Mr. Truand.
The General Other Fund checks this evening covers checks number 143, 965 through 144, 148. Wire transfers, uh, numbers 803 to 808, ACH check numbers 080 through 104. Options renovation wire number 809, debt service wire 798 to 802, and then voided check numbers 143, 968 to 143, 971. In the combined amount of $1,078,499.14. You may notice in the bills this time, we had our debt service obligations. We pay those twice a year, so yeah, over debt, which is only interest payments and a roll of pay interest and principal.
Questions for Mr. Truand? Very none. Looking for motion.
I move to approve the General and Other Fund Bills of September 27th, 2021, check numbers 143, 965 to 144, 148. Wire numbers 803 to 808, ACH check numbers 080 to 104. Options renovation wire number 809, debt service wires 798 to 802, and voided check numbers 143, 968 to 143, 971. In the combined amount of $1,078,499.14 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the General and Other Fund Bills of September the 27th, 2021, checks number 143, 965, 144, 148. Wire numbers 803 to 808, ACH check number 080, 104. Options renovation wire numbers 809, debt service wires 798 to 802, and voided check numbers 143, 968 to 143, 971. In the combined amount of $1,078,499.14 as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. Overnight travel request from the FFA.
Good evening, everyone. Excited to be here. Uh, this list that we are presenting to you tonight is significantly shorter than a normal year when we go through this. Uh, normally we would try to give you a list of all of our overnight activities planned for the year, but obviously a little virus wants to kind of change those plans a little bit, so we're taking it event by event as we go through that. So, um, we do come to you guys tonight, um, requesting, uh, permission to attend the National FFA convention at the end of October, October 26th, October 30th. Uh, we obviously know that, uh, dynamics can change anytime based off of health conditions, whatever, but, uh, based off that current scenario where we're at is, uh, looking for your consideration and approval. Even with last year with, uh, you know, COVID, uh, as an FH chapter, we had a very successful year. We had lots of neat things happening. I think we did some neat things, uh, locally within the, within the egg program and some different apps like that. Uh, but as an FH chapter, we still try to do things and, um, even though the the activities may not have been the same, we want some new ways to give students opportunities to go through that. So, uh, what we're looking for, uh, a couple of quick things, uh, one is that, uh, in my 26 years here, it's the first time we have a national qualifying team. Uh, in a, in a contest, we had some individuals, uh, advanced, but, uh, we had uh, an egg issues team, which was, uh, kind of fitting in with our solar project. Uh, they did a project about his uh, solar energy viable alternative for the agriculture industry. Uh, and so we had, uh, four students who advanced to that one. They did already compete in round one. Uh, unfortunately they did not advance to round one. Sorry, Lauren. Uh, Lauren was part of that team, uh, but they did, uh, they did very well, uh, but they are still being recognized on Wednesday, which kind of requires, uh, that group to go down a little bit earlier than our normal bus. Uh, the rest of the bus takes off Wednesday morning. Just from a timeline, it's not real feasible to get both there. So we're going to be kind of splitting the group. Uh, so, uh, three students and myself would take, uh, depart on Tuesday, probably late morning, uh, to take off Tuesday, get on their core Tuesday evening, get checked in, and then we'll take part in Wednesday's activities and take part in the awards program and see some of the finalists and some of the finals in that contest. Uh, as an FH chapter, uh, this summer we are recognized as, in the state, we were recognized as a gold grade FH chapter, which means that we were, we were in the top 25 of the 250 toward 60 programs, uh, in state Wisconsin that advances on national competition. And then at the national level, uh, those winners or those chapters are then, uh, ranked as either being a three star, two star, or one star. So we're in the middle, uh, but again, still very pleased with where we're at, uh, with out of 8,000 uh, FH chapters across the country. Again, really distinct honor. So very proud of that, that concept. Uh, we have one graduate student, uh, Leo Allen, who is earning or has earned his American FH degree, and that ceremony will be on Saturday morning. And, uh, we again open up to, uh, school administrators and, and guidance counselors or school counselors, excuse me. Uh, cause we want them to kind of be able to wrap their hand and, wrap their head around and understand what egg education can be and the opportunities that build with that. Uh, so Mr. Tadok is, is going, uh, Ms. Blair from the high school is going, and Mr. Hudson, uh, who is, uh, taking on a role with the middle school egg program. We thought it'd be good for him to kind of learn more about what this FH thing as well and, uh, to be part of that process. So, uh, look for those three to go with us. Uh, we've got scheduled a, uh, tour of a honey farm and it's a large one processing facility and go through the whole bundle of the whole, uh, retail piece of that as well. Uh, we just secured last week, we secured tickets for, they have a private, uh, private concert. Uh, this year's singer is Brett Evans. And then I forget the name, but the, one of the gentleman that was on American Idol just a couple of years ago was an FH member, so he's opening up for that as well. So we've got some of that. And then we do a rodeo on Friday night? No. It gets Friday night during rodeo. And so again, it's really a lot of neat things going on. Uh, we expect convention obviously will continue to be a little bit different. Uh, you know, attendance, uh, there's a huge expo center, uh, expo, the career fair that's there. Again, limited opportunities for the students. And safety protocols right now, national convention is national phase. Masks for everybody, everything that's indoors, all indoor events, those types of items. Obviously with busing, we have 12, we'll be masked on busing and obviously then as parameters continue to change, we will match with it.
Questions?
Do we need to have another chaperone call if you went to Bay early for policy? Are the other three officials joining on the bus?
I know I will, yeah, we've been cordial about that. But look at that. Sorry, I do need to dry. I have to be back by the heat, so maybe on the way down. Yeah.
Okay, I think we're in.
Other questions? Well, say that again.
Sorry, that was my, yeah, that was my only question before we're being asked, is that? Okay, fair. Good with that, just in case something happens prior to everyone else getting there.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Well, we said they worked on a amazing job representing our program over the years, like these kinds of things. I'm glad that they, you know, they continue that. Yeah. If it's a little bit different than it was.
It will be different, but it's still, it's still going to be a good program. They developed their craft over the years.
Are they, do they have a sense of what they're expecting numbers wise?
Um, they should by now, but they haven't shared anything with the general, because last week, last week was the first day of registration. So all I know is that there were eight teachers all over the country sitting at their computer at 5:00 PM Central's time. Crash and systems.
Long time, last time I went to Indianapolis, it was, yeah, with the virus and I think it was 55,000 students.
Yeah, and pre-COVID, we were, pre-COVID, we were, we were around 70,000 people.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's, it's the largest, largest annual youth, um, gathering every year that goes through it. Model space that we use up and take in.
And they all have matching jackets?
All got matching jackets.
Take over the downtown.
We do, we do, we do, we do, we shut down streets.
That's awesome.
And teenagers have lots of discretionary money. We spend it in one spot. Adults spend it in one spot.
I'm sure they love the tourism.
Oh, yes, they do.
I said in town.
But even, even in Indianapolis, we're, we're still the same concept. Is that even hotels? Cause hotels don't have enough staff. I mean, so it'll be a different dynamics. So how's that many people will be, will be people who'll be an hour out. We're fortunate, we really, we have one that's a hotel that's literally downtown, so we are walking distance.
Well, for our policy, we do need to approve this, because it is overnight.
I move to approve the overnight travel request from the FFA as presented.
Is there a second?
Yes.
So moved to second to approve the overnight travel request from the FFA as presented. Go, Calhoun, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If you're sending out the trail.
Is there, is there, um, days of school on end of that week?
Yeah, they'll miss two days of class and then Friday's off.
Okay, so when, so it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
The egg issues team will miss most of Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Most months, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
All right. Travel request from esports.
Hi, guys. Uh, Jerry Isla's here. Work at the high school. Maybe you guys know me. Um, do a lot of PLW stuff and all that stuff. What, uh, we are blessed to have Mike Dolly as part of our business department. Uh, for those of you that do not know when we get, we need to hire him. He's also the president of WIHSEA. What that means is that he runs the entire state esports system. He has connections with pretty much everybody. He talks to actual developers, designers. He's on the pulse with all of those people. Uh, and one of the things that he also does is he gets inundated with all of these cool little events that they do. Now, this is not an overnight. I noticed it said overnight. This is not an overnight. It's just out of state. Um, this is actually going to be taking place, I believe, in Bloomington, Illinois, uh, which is about three hours south of us. And because it's out of state, we have to bring it up. We've been very blessed with our esports teams. Uh, before it became totally official and we started doing all this, we actually had a very successful League of Legends team. We do four competitive sports. We have three trophies in three years. Um, and if obviously the most successful we have is Aiden Hamilton, who, um, is running on a 60% scholarship and doing quite well. If you've ever gotten a chance to watch some of the videos, I got to watch you beat Ohio State, seriously, as a Madden fan. That is, seriously, that made my summer. Um, but here's what I will tell you. This is 60 successfully is basically for the Smash Brothers tournament that we're going to be bringing. One of the four sports that we do is for Smash Brothers. And what we, everybody was all caught up on the Aiden train last year. We knew that we had a chance of that. The little known fact is that our Super Smash Brothers team went to the final four state last year. We have four freshmen and one sophomore competed on that team. All right, so this is a whole new generation that we're looking at. We brought the entire team back. There are sophomores and juniors this year. Um, we're super excited. We have a, a, a student, John Atkins, who is ranked fourth in the state right now that plays on this team. So again, we've just been very blessed in this town of esports. And, um, one of the opportunities we're going to get is we're going to go down to the motor arena on a Saturday, October 9th, uh, in Bloomington. And they're going to compete against other states, which is really exciting, but more importantly, they're, they're boasting, I think it's in one of the slides, they're, they're boasting, um, we're going to take them, we're going to take a passenger van down there. We've got the five players. And then the two, and we're going to leave early in the morning. We should get back by nine o'clock that night. And then one of the things that they have when they're competing is their scouts. There are a ton of scouts from all of the different schools. So now that we have one in there, we're just looking at pushing, you know, these, these things for kids. Any opportunity to get them to get scholarships to go to these places. And so it's pretty exciting. And, uh, there's a list of the places that we have colleges that actually be there. Uh, Arizona State's going to be there. Um, Illinois State's going to be there, some of the common ones that we'll know. Illinois Wesleyan, University of Illinois is obviously hosting this in, in, in that area. There's some really big names that are out there just to get their attention. We realize that they're going to be sophomores and juniors, so this is not something that they're, they're signing on the dotted line right now, but that we're hoping that we make a presence so that we are asked to come back next year. And then my senior, hopefully, will get that scholarship and we can actually start a trend here, which would be really, really exciting to get this, this genre of kids. The cost per student is going to be about $20. Um, basically what we're dealing with is there's a $10 registration fee for them. And then travel costs, um, basically we're dealing with, um, snacks and foods. That, so we put it as travel costs, but this is basically them just to snack on when we stop at the pit stops and stuff like that. Um, we did ask them to bring extra money or pack lunch for, for lunch to do that as well. Um, and if money is obviously an issue, you know, you know how that goes. How the teachers will. But that's our plan. So hopefully, uh, hopefully you'd, uh, be willing to support us on this. Like I said, we've been doing extremely well. Um, I'd like to see this trend continue. I'd like to see a fourth trophy case in four years. That would be something that, um, it's reminiscent of Green Bay Packard, you know, that kind of thing where we're, you know, those first couple of years, we just keep doing that. Um, pretty soon we're going to take over the trophy case. That's what our goal is. So, um, hopefully you guys, uh, will allow us to go down there and show them that Elkhorn is for real and more than just, uh, rocket.
So will they be able to physically see the people are competing against it?
Yes, so they'll actually sit next to them. So, um, it's very similar to what we do in homecoming. So in homecoming, we actually have these tournaments. I'll have 130 kids in my wing tomorrow. Yeah, uh, so what you do is you basically have four play right next to each other. So now they'll be spread out. Um, uh, obviously COVID is going to be, they'll put barriers and all that kind of stuff. But yeah, they'll, they'll be right next to each other. They'll be called down there. They'll go down in front of the stage and there'll be large screens of them playing all over the big arena. It's, it's crazy, but very similar to what you see in, uh, first robotics or any of the other competitions you see in these larger venues. It's, it's really pretty cool. So, and my, I've been told by Mike Dolly that they'll be streaming this on Twitch, so people here in Elkhorn can actually watch this as well. So that'll be pretty exciting. Yeah.
Other questions for those? All right, very done. Looking for motion.
Uh, let's break the overnight and I move to approve travel requests from the esports team as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the over, uh, travel request, out of state travel request from the esports team as presented. Uh, go, Calhoun, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We'll have fun with that.
Jerry, will you, um, push that link out for the Twitch stream and we'll make sure to get that.
You bet. Make sure that gets out there. Absolutely. Yeah, as soon as we don't move them stuff.
Important discussion items, uh, excuse me, I'm a part.
Yes, I actually just sent it to Mr. Tafa. Can I have some photos in it? You guys want to see some photos?
Okay.
I always like photos.
No, really. Kids will, they're free.
No, no, no.
We have evidence.
Yeah.
Did you share it? Did you just share it or?
Yeah, I just shared it. I figured people might want to see it.
Yeah.
Okay, so obviously it's homecoming week, everybody, so that's really exciting. Um, tonight, right now, actually, the one act play is going on, so that's really cool. Tomorrow, we're having our activity day. We schedule Tuesday, usually do it on Wednesday. Then we have powder pop tomorrow night, and I think we're doing the normal seniors versus freshmen, sophomores versus juniors, and whoever's after that, they together. We have our spirit days and Friday, obviously, um, we have our assembly, but this year it's outside of the football field. Usually we have it inside in the, um, not auditorium, in the gym. And then we have the parade at four and the homecoming game, which is Waterford. Hopefully we win Saturday dance. Tons of clubs have started up for this year, so that's really exciting to have a bunch of people involved. The ball musical production is called All Together Now. Um, tennis team is third in conference this year. Um, our football team won against Woma on their homecoming night. Uh, one at home against Woma and Saffir won 14-0 against Woma away. Quite a blowout. Then Elkhorn Middle School, their first case was canceled due to weather because they decided to have it outside this year. But the PTL will be your scheduling, so that's nice.
The one kind that it rains?
I know.
It was like, it was like, wait, last week, and it got canceled. Four times in six months.
We're doing their spirit days this week and of course ending the week with the, um, school spirit purple and gold, so everybody comes up to parade. And the cross country and girls' basketball seasons are finishing up. Then at Jackson Elementary, this Wednesday, the 29th, they're having their 10th annual walkathon and the kids walk an hour during school at the fairgrounds. And Ms. Stednitz has run this every year and they raise a lot of money. It's their number one fundraiser. So Tibbetts Elementary, the PTA back to school boogie on the September 14th outside and had a great turnout. And they had a huge kickoff to their all biggest program and kids created banners and themes around kindness. So if you scroll down, you can see a few of those. Little kiddos are so adorable. They have a bunch of banners. I love it. I remember doing this in elementary school so much. Then Westwood Elementary, their picture day is coming up, um, tomorrow, doing Still Smile, which is an amazing opportunity for kids that don't get to see a dentist. Um, and then they're setting up for success night, which is something new this year. It's basically planning for their children's future and, um, just going through their grades and how their school year is going to look. And then the College Korean Academy, they are using RCV calls to solve some equations. There's a video on Facebook. If you'd like to check out there. Um, and they started their Elkhorn Youthville program. They're breaking on a house in Whitewater and they started that, I think it was last week, Friday or Thursday. I don't know.
They must have grabbed them hold post. It's a little further along.
I was just saying, did they start another one?
Wrong one, man.
Okay.
You don't remember being at the other groundbreaking, Julie?
So it's, it's really cool. I, I've never seen anything like that before.
Yeah.
So then Option is also having a spirit week, including some dress up things, which is so cool. And Lauren mentioned last night, last time, the Options T-shirt challenge. And I had a few photos to pull up. Some people took them at the Smoky Mountains. And another two little kids, they took theirs at the World Beef Expo and I thought that was just such a cute photo that I had to include it. So yeah, that's really awesome.
Excellent, thank you.
Crazy, nice stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, man.
Hey, recommendation of district administrator personnel.
All right, our personnel sheet is attached. I want to thank Bethany Palmer and Amy Weber for their service. Um, Bethany is a fourth grade teacher and Amy is a specialized teaching assistant. And then Sabrina Sapella agreed to come back and, uh, Sabrina was here last year and she came back to fill in for the position that Bethany Palmer's in. To finish off the year. Precious Cortez was hired as a specialized teaching assistant. Winner Sandstrom is specialized teaching assistant. Megan Shuprader is a specialized teaching assistant. And then Alan Gortowski is a custodian at Tibbetts. Tom Sittars is a Jackson custodian and Jason, um, Holmhoffer is a high school custodian. I have the personnel.
Questions for Mr. Ella? Very done, looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September 27th, 2021, including new employment contracts, conditions upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved to second to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September 27th, 2021, including new employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. Yes.
All right, I have a gift this evening to present and, um, really it's a gift of manpower and we may be off a little bit on the the value, but last week, Stednitz builders sent four carpenters to the youth belt site in Whitewater um, to help them get the siding up and I believe some of the um, roofing and some of the other work getting shored up. We've been absent a contractor for a number of weeks now. We've been trying to secure someone else to cover that, so um, we're still working on that and I know Stednitz is setting up on some other individuals this, this week as well to work out their kids. So, um, that's much appreciated and wanted to recognize that, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. Looking for a motion to approve.
Someone?
A second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the generous gift of Stednitz builders as presented. Go, Calhoun.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Phil?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements.
Hey, we have a number of announcements as, um, Maddie mentioned, we have homecoming this week. And the assembly is planned to be outside, um, along with the dance and I think there's still some discussion there. Well, I can see how things are going. You know, the students prefer to hold the dance indoors. It's also, there's a 40% chance of rain on that Saturday. So with that, with the current infection rates, we're going to do a similar protocol that we've done in the prior dances and require a rapid test prior, within 72 hours of the event. We'll provide the testing onsite. If someone wants to go offsite and submit, they might have a date that lives in, I don't know, Superior. They can get the test done up there and submit it down here, but, um, with our current infection rates, as always, Phil is really in our best interest to, to make sure we have as much protection as possible, especially considering that the dance is going to be in the gymnasium. We'll open up all the doors. They're usually, they have the freshman gym closed. We'll open that up, have a little bit more space and try to space it out, but that's the homecoming dance is by far our most popular.
Yep.
Uh, we haven't had it since COVID, if I recall. We didn't have homecoming dance last year, correct? It's usually over 700 kids, so that's a lot of participants.
They can bring gas, which is fine.
Yeah. Yeah, we figured the infection rates might be better with a guest. To be frank, it's statistically, there really isn't any different required test for all of them.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll require the testing and hopefully now it's that, that's sure we have protection there. We have the WASB regional meeting on October 20th. Uh, that's here at the Monte Carlo Room. If you want to look in the, the board notes, there's some protocol requirements there. They're also going to do a similar either the rapid test, something two hours beforehand or vaccination card, which is pretty standard for a lot of events now. Then I want to go ahead and I'll pull up our the COVID data sheet. I'll share this with you. Just to give you an update, this goes back to we update this every day, but this, this comes from our web EOC and then that feeds our overall dashboard. This is the actual graph. Bill collects these numbers in for daily updates on web EOC. You can see this was last year Thanksgiving time when we shut down and went virtual. This is the actual positive cases, blue, students, staff wasn't that high. It's the small amount between students and the staff. That's just the way that graph works. Um, then you'll see this is where we're at. Then you'll see, this is where we're at now. We're definitely on the positive, the number of positive cases are ranging about where we were during that Thanksgiving time's frame of last year. We do our quarantine protocols differently. We, it's a watch list. If they're at school on the exposure, they can still continue to counsel as they're not symptomatic. If they're exposed at home, then they follow the more traditional quarantine protocol. We're seeing a stabilization of the numbers, but we're sitting, if I go to our dashboard, and you just go to the district website, COVID information, this gets updated each weekday, Monday through Friday at 8:00. So, this number here, well, actually, this is down a little bit. It was at 30. It'll probably go up a little tomorrow because Mondays, we have the testing. I know we had a few more cases today. So, it's, you know, at the high school level, we see the highest amount. Westside had a little bit of a spike right from the onset of school. Westside had some numbers, so it's starting to fall down and come down. And really, we haven't seen significant numbers or any spread at the other facilities, but we have seen spread both at high school and at Westside. It's been not what I would consider substantial spread, but we've clearly seen some cases where patient zero here exposed these kids around them. This kid that was sitting next to them also came down, and we can't identify a different potential exposure. So, we have seen a couple of instances of spread within the high school and also likely at Westside this year. But they have stabilized. It hasn't been like this student exposed 10 kids and four of the 10 got sick. It's been one or two at the most. We'll say if they're riding in cars with each other during the activities outside of school, where they're really in that close proximity, we see a much higher transmission rate. But that's where the numbers are at. That's why I feel those precautions are needed for the homecoming dance and a want to still continue. It'll also give us a decent baseline. Are there a number that we're missing? Or are our other protocols don't come in through symptomatic? Is that, you know, working, or do we have a lot of asymptomatic people out there? Our experience has been that if they're not symptomatic, they generally will test negative. When we do test some asymptomatic people, but like when we tested all the staff, 480 something tests, not a single one. So, it'll give us an idea if there's, you know, a lot of asymptomatic. Questions on any of that? That's where I got.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
If you want to talk about the regional meeting or not?
Oh, you did that.
Oh, I mentioned the regional. I guess I do need to know if Jody or I need to know, just so we can get registered for the regional meeting.
I know, I cannot make it.
Okay.
I'm planning on going. We got a letter from Tom.
Yes. Yes, we did. I were sponsoring an event that night, but I have to be at some.
Okay.
I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I, I guess. All right, just let Jody know and, yeah, we'll go from there.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Move in a second to do adjourn.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borbego?
Yes.
Have a good evening.